How would you describe your experience?
I would describe it like it's been okay so far. But now that I'm starting to get used to being at this school, since it's an official middle school, I think I'm well, very well.
What inspired you to become a teacher?
It was probably my third grade teacher and then also my 10th grade teacher. Just like some of the students here, not having sometimes the support at home or coming from an undeserved area. That's how I was and so knowing that I would want better. And those teachers really important to me, so therefore I want to become a teacher.
What do you like most about this school?
I gotta say how inclusive it is and it's very, I don't know, like very vibrant in the kind of people that there are. There's just so many unique people here and it's nice to see it.
What teacher inspires you the most?
Ms. Watson.
Why?
Because she's funny, she actually teaches, she knows how to get her class together.
What are your plans for the future?
Oh, well, I plan to go to an acting, you know, performing arts college. So one day I can be an actress.
So I want to go to WNBA or I will become an actress. Or I would create my own business with hair and cosmetologist.
We went on a field trip on Sunday. And it was like we was in a hangar with planes and stuff. And it was a flight simulator. I didn't know I wanted to be a pilot, but then when I got on it, passed through flying colors. I took off, did a 360, landed. And then she was like, you should be a pilot. I was like, okay.
How would you describe the kids?
The students here at Eggers. We have a melting pot of students. And that's what I like most is students come from a lot of different backgrounds here at Eggers. They are energetic, they are busy.
What do you like most about the school?
When I connect with the kids and I become that teacher that they come to when they need something. I think that's, that's the most important thing about the school, I feel.
How would you describe the atmosphere?
I really owe it to my staff who came, supported, you know, picked up things that I couldn't do alone. So I would describe it as it's a really tight knit family. I think everybody has the same expectation and the same desire here at Eggers. That they want it to be a good school, they want it to have that family atmosphere. And they just do everything they can to make that happen.
How would you describe your experience?
I would describe it like it's been okay so far. But now that I'm starting to get used to being at this school, since it's an official middle school, I think I'm well, very well.
What inspired you to become a teacher?
It was probably my third grade teacher and then also my 10th grade teacher. Just like some of the students here, not having sometimes the support at home or coming from an undeserved area. That's how I was and so knowing that I would want better. And those teachers really important to me, so therefore I want to become a teacher.
What do you like most about this school?
I gotta say how inclusive it is and it's very, I don't know, like very vibrant in the kind of people that there are. There's just so many unique people here and it's nice to see it.
What teacher inspires you the most?
Ms. Watson.
Why?
Because she's funny, she actually teaches, she knows how to get her class together.
What are your plans for the future?
Oh, well, I plan to go to an acting, you know, performing arts college. So one day I can be an actress.
So I want to go to WNBA or I will become an actress. Or I would create my own business with hair and cosmetologist.
We went on a field trip on Sunday. And it was like we was in a hangar with planes and stuff. And it was a flight simulator. I didn't know I wanted to be a pilot, but then when I got on it, passed through flying colors. I took off, did a 360, landed. And then she was like, you should be a pilot. I was like, okay.
How would you describe the kids?
The students here at Eggers. We have a melting pot of students. And that's what I like most is students come from a lot of different backgrounds here at Eggers. They are energetic, they are busy.
What do you like most about the school?
When I connect with the kids and I become that teacher that they come to when they need something. I think that's, that's the most important thing about the school, I feel.
How would you describe the atmosphere?
I really owe it to my staff.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the public work session for the School City of Hammond. If everyone can please face the flag for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna call a roll now. Trustee Blake King.
We're here and happy Black History Month.
Trustee Spencer.
Present.
Trustee Murphy.
Present.
Trustee Candalaria.
Present.
All five trustees are accounted for. Superintendent Miller.
Good evening, everyone. If you're not familiar with public work sessions, typically there is no voting going on, there's no action items. It is typically an opportunity for the administration to present reports or initiatives to the board so they have a better understanding and for the board to be able to ask questions of administration. So that's what we're doing tonight. First person I'd like to call is Lydia McNeely for a presentation on National School Counseling Week. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Superintendent Miller, President Miller, Board Trustees, thank you so much for having us speak with you today. So it is actually National School Counseling Week as well. So we have some of our School City Hammond School counselors here today, so I want to acknowledge them. So it is National School Counseling Week. National School Counseling Week runs from February 5th through the 9th. And this year's theme is School Counseling Standards-Based Student-Focused. The purpose of this week is to focus attention on the unique contribution of school counselors within our schools. This week highlights the tremendous impact school counselors have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. So thank you, school counselors. Today we have a few, a few of our school counselors. We have Amy Dudzik, Michelle Arnold, Bridget Lucas, Samuel Payan, and Sarah Pesnick. So I wanted to highlight just some of the things our school counselors have been working on and Morton will highlight a couple of other things later on today. But this is all done in collaboration with teachers, community partners, different people within this, administrators, different people within the school that helps work and get this all together. So Scott Middle School actually just received an additional grant from Enchanted Backpack. So this grant is actually going to be for Scorpion Square. So they're going to actually receive that in March. They will receive funding to help, to help prepare like family students. So if we have a family event that night, we'll be able to have resources for families. We'll be able to have like computers if they needed to log in for 21st Century Scholar information. So we'll have that information and we'll also have a washer and dryer given to us at that event as well. So we'll send out invitations for that, that's in March. Eggers and Scott Middle School, they have, again in conjunction with Junior Achievement, they have a career panel this spring. So our students take what we call career interest inventories. So it lets, it lets us know what our students are most interested in. And so based on those results, Junior Achievement is going to look at those results and pick panelists for both of our middle schools, so we'll be doing that in the spring as well. Eggers went to the Finance Park 8th Grade Field Trip and that was with our college and career teacher, Dr. McLean. Scott Middle School also had a NIPSCO event, which again, looking at those interest inventory assessments, they find out, found out what students were interested in careers that related to the careers that were in, at NIPSCO. So they had people from NIPSCO come and meet and work with them. The Purdue AI STEM Conference, all of our secondary schools attended that. We've had multiple college fairs at both of our high schools. Multiple FASFA nights, our Hammond Central counselors, most, a majority of them could not be there here today because they're holding a FASFA night right now at the school. The Franklin Career Fair is, is district-wide and we do have some people from the IDO that will be coming to that as well and that's in March. We've had early admit days at both of our high schools, we've never done that before. So that right away just increased the number of our students applying to Purdue. From Hammond Central, there was a 53% increase. They're still looking at applications, so that's probably going to increase even more. At Morton High School, they had theirs a little bit earlier. So we have a total of $550,000 in scholarships that students receive just from that date. So thank you counselors for the work that you did to make that happen. And there are some pictures from some of the events. So the state of Indiana has a comprehensive school counseling program called Carrying the Torch. So schools that have obtained Carrying the Torch status, once they progress to gold, they demonstrate that they have a comprehensive and accountable school counseling program and guidance program aligned with Indiana's school counselor standards as well as our national model, the ASCA standards. So I do want to congratulate Scott Middle School and Morton High School for being designated as Carrying the Torch Bronze Star Schools. And so that is their, they have certificates, but that's some of their congratulations. An ASCA RAMP designation, so our national model, the Recognized ASCA Model Program recognizes schools committed to delivering a school counseling program aligned with the ASCA national model framework. The RAMP designation demonstrates to administrators, school boards, families in the community at large that the schools are committed to supporting, school counselors are committed to supporting the mission of the school and the district. So to date, there are approximately 1,300 schools nationwide, not just in the state of Indiana, nationwide that have earned RAMP designation. So I want to congratulate Hammond Central for being the newest RAMP recipient. This is a national accreditation and I want the board and whoever's watching right now to be very much aware of that is the current RAMP school list on the left. So these are all the schools within the state of Indiana that have earned RAMP designation. The middle or the, the black part is our Carrying the Torch designation. And please be mindful of the districts and the schools that have received this designation. The majority of the schools that are across the state, and this is not just across state, this is ramp across the country, are typically not urban districts. So this really does speak to the work of the school counselors as well as the building administrators, because without their support and allowing the school counselors to do their actual job and school counseling task, then that wouldn't be possible. So again, thank you to the building administrators and the counselors for their work. And so part of National School Counseling Week is advocacy, because the thing is that we want our administrators, we want school boards to understand the role of school counselor and the importance to students of implementing a comprehensive school counseling program. So advocacy means communicating to the school community what the comprehensive school counseling program is, how it makes a difference, and how it affects the success of all students. So an example of advocacy is actually presenting to your school board. So today Morton High School is going to present their advisory council meeting right now. And all of our secondary schools do have advisory councils. For this particular advisory council, they did reach out and invited Trustee King to be a part of that advisory council. So thank you to Trustee King for joining that advisory council. So we are going to present Samuel Payan and Sarah Pesnick are going to go ahead and present that for you today.
So go GOV's for Morton. So go GOV's. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm gonna do one of these, so speaking to the community and the board. So my name is Samuel Payan. I am a school counselor at Morton High.
I'm Sarah Pesnick. I'm a school counselor as well.
Guys, just the people online won't be able to hear you unless you're right up.
Okay, so we are fully staffed, which according to our professional organization, thinks this is a great thing. We have 250 kids per caseload, give or take. And we have two for each grade level.
So the advisory council is supposed to be for getting all the stakeholders who are, a couple reasons. Getting all the stakeholders that are unfamiliar with our work, familiar with our work, in hopes to guide and support the school counseling program, provide feedback, advocate for the program and the school counselor, and learn about the school counselor role. So hence, one of the reasons why I wanted to come here. So in the advisory council consists of either community members. We invited the local fasteners, the steelworkers, the school board, different parents, students, in hopes that they're able to advise us on the school counseling program. Also reviewing what we do as a school counseling program, make recommendations, and even join us in the effort of trying to make a better school and a better community. So we've found some success, we found more, we got people that normally are not involved. And we are seeing the fruits of that labor.
What is ASCA? ASCA is our American School Counselor Association. It helps us create a better framework and programming. It helps us with accountability, the way that we deliver our services, both direct and indirect. So to the students, to the parents, to the community, but also we refer services out as well. It helps us build a foundation. In the last 18 months that I've been working here, I feel like Morton High School has built a solid school counseling foundation. And we have all worked together to create the greatness that happens within our walls. And hopefully we can like spill over into the community. And then it also helps us with management so that we are accountable to ourselves, to each other, and especially to the community and the children.
So as, as Lydia, thank you again for all the support. We are a Bronze Star School, which means that we're going for the gold. And if we get it, we'll let y'all know. But this is, this is a big feat. This just basically says, hey, you are a comprehensive school counseling program. We're not the traditional old school, school counselors or guidance counselors where you just meet individually with students. We are in the classrooms, we are in the community, we are outreach to parents, we are providing opportunities that did not exist years past. So one of the, one of the goals, we have three goals that we're working on and we're aligning, we are, we aligned ourselves up with the school improvement plan. So the first goal that we're working on and have been working on consistently is by May 30th, 2024, 11th graders in Algebra II with an F at the end of quarter one, will decrease the number of Fs in Algebra II by 5% from 117 and 111. That is our goal. Last year, we beat our goal by 11%. We, we, so that was great. Here are our standards that we work on, which is critical thinking and advocacy skills for self and others. And that's how we try to, try to beat this goal. So some, some things that we do in order to, to complete this goal, we do individual and group, small group for students, classroom lessons on study skills, note-taking skills, self-advocacy, providing tutoring information, peer tutoring, teacher collaboration, and phone calls home. And a lot of this is data-driven and we have the data to support. Hence why we sent it over to the ASCA for, for national certification.
Our second goal is attendance. So by May 30th, 2024, the number of students with at least a 94% attendance rate divided by the total number of students enrolled in the school will be 60%, which will reflect a 4.6 annual increase. So we are hoping to increase our attendance. And that of course also has a standard for positive attitudes towards work and learning and responsibility for ourself and actions. And our incentives for attendance are PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention, chips and chill, which kids get to go to the cafeteria and get chips and drinks and hang out, listen to music. They were given free football game tickets, shirts. And then one of the counselors wrote a grant so that we could purchase electronic items that kids want. Headphones, Bluetooth speakers, Bluetooth computer mouse. And so far, it's worked out pretty well.
Our last goal here is by 2024, our overall graduation rate will be increased by 2.5% from 73 to 75%. This data is taken and made public to all on the Indiana GPS. And here are standards as well, and I hope you see a common theme here that like teachers, we do have standards that are, that we abide by, that are driven from the ASCA national model, which we appreciate. So how are we going to get this one done? We have instant decision days, which will, will lay out here more data on what, what has come across from that. We have college and military rep visits that come all the time, college and career field trips. We have people that come to our campus as, as local field trips, like UTI, which is Universal Technical Institute. We went to the trade show, we had military presentations, college fairs. Invested, which is the not-for-profit organization that helps families apply to the FASFA. We have 30-minute individual meetings, new state requirement. We have another new state requirement, FASFA, which is a completion for all seniors. So we're, we're trying to do a lot and it's, and we'll, we'll get to the data.
We do a lot of small group counseling lessons and classroom lessons are a huge part of our school counseling program. We have time for individual guidance and counseling. We have done the Indiana Career Explorer for post-secondary readiness curriculum, parent meetings, phone calls, emails, Schoology, peer tutoring, after-school tutoring, college military lunch visits, field trips to expose students to colleges and career options. We send a monthly newsletter to our students and parents. So every month, parents should be able to see our newsletter as well as the students get the newsletter. And there's always new information on their upcoming field trips, dates. Anything that you could need is on that newsletter. And then we also have a school counseling website. And you can find a lot of information on that website as well. Yep, that's all of us. We promote the ACC enrollment. I know for my sophomores that are eligible next year, I have really, really pushed them to enroll for the ACC. And we continue to work with community partners.
So on top of all that, we have our hands on a pot and also school-wide initiatives that we have partnered with either administration or other teachers such as College Go Week, PBIS, PNW Trio Upward Bound Program, that's more community partners. Junior Achievement, we had a school-wide all-day experience. MTSS, we work with the Suspension, Expulsion Interventionist, Truancy Officer, GOV News, morning announcements. I hope you all are getting the idea that, that we're involved way more than perhaps people understand. Maybe people know, people don't know. This is part of the advocacy that we are trying to show you, show you all as a board and community who is behind me. Data, so, so far this year, let's check this out. We have had, we are tracking the amount of students that come in. So thus far, we have had 1,240 visits to our student office. Okay? We've had a total of 152 classroom visits, whether that was through lessons, which include graduation requirements, emotional learning, career readiness, 21st Century Scholars for all grade levels, and, and everything else in between. If you equal out all that, it's roughly about 4,500 student contacts that we had. four-thousand-five-hundred student contacts that we had among those classroom visits. We've had twenty, twenty colleges that come do lunchroom visits. We had military, National Guard, they come weekly. We have them weekly planned. And then we had the Marines also visit on a weekly basis outside of others, other branches.
This year, we did Instant Decision Day, and we had five different colleges and universities, a hundred-and-fifty-six students admitted, and about four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in scholarships, which is pretty awesome. We've had seven field trips, and four-hundred-and-ten students were impacted by those field trips. And then again, the individual student office visits has been one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty, and we're only halfway through the school year.
So just, just pictures of what we have been doing, what are we, we, we have done, and we're going to continue to do. We have, with the help of Mr. Hicks and other administrators, we have a counseling space, which is awesome. They're on the right-hand side. It's a good lounge, like what we've used for multipurpose, which has been great. But all in all, this is, again, just to get you all an idea of what we do. Sometimes it's an elusive thing what counselors do, because you may see us through behind a screen or behind an email, and the larger impact is not understood the way that, and sometimes it even surprises us. Quite honestly, sometimes like, we did that? And then it's like, yeah, we did that. So we just wanted to share a little bit of our world and what we do. That was, that's the newsletter that was shared a little bit earlier. And thanks again, Lydia. Thank you. And for everybody else here that paid attention, thank you.
All right. Trustees, are there any questions of this presentation? Or presenters?
Excuse me. Madam President?
Trustee Blake King.
I find this presentation extremely outstanding. And of course, I would hope that it continues throughout the years. I guess my question is to Mr. Miller. Considering the state that the district is in now, how do we proceed this program moving forward for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five in terms of number of counselors available and that we can, we can continue to deliver this kind of educational piece for our students?
Trustee Blake King, I don't think we're in a position to be able to answer that this evening.
We're not in a position? We should always be in a position to answer a question.
Yeah, we're not, we're not in a, we're not, we're not able to talk about staffing or, or, yeah, we're not able to do that right now.
That's interesting.
Madam President?
Trustee Murphy. I had a question about FAFSA. So the state is making you do a hundred percent of seniors on FAFSA. Do they give you any exceptions? So from my own personal experience, my youngest was like, well, I want a gap year. So he was like, I don't need to do FAFSA. So what do you do with exceptions?
Parents are able to fill out waivers, so we're sending waivers out to families. But there are concerns with the new FAFSA. That's coming from the U.S. Department of Education, where if students, if they're mixed-status families, and so if one parent doesn't have a social security number, there, there have been issues with it freezing. So this is not through the state. This is through the federal government. They're very much aware of it. They're working on trying to remedy it. But that is stopping progress. But we do send letters home. They send it out on their, Bridgette, probably speak more to this if she'd like. But she's our senior counselor at Morton. That's the focus of the work right now.
Hi, I'm Bridget Lucas, one of the senior counselors at Morton. So there are a lot of holdups with FAFSA right now. Right now, they're being delayed for everybody until April, is what we were just told. Students are receiving an email, and they can submit FAFSA, but they're not going to hear back until April, is the email that they have received from FAFSA. And yes, there are waivers that we have in English and Spanish if they choose not to complete the FAFSA.
So you feel that the hundred percent goal is achievable with the waivers?
I, I wouldn't be confident on that this year because of all of the problems with the application that are out of everybody's control. But we are definitely having, we have a lot of parent nights set up. Like I said, they have one tonight. We're working on it with students every day and sending out information constantly to students. But because of the holdups from the government, I don't, I couldn't answer that question.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Trustee Spencer.
Sorry. Is the holdup with the federal government, is that for new FAFSA applications or also returning ones?
I believe that is for all, because I was told from another staff member at our school for their relative that was applying as a returning student, they were having the same problem. Yeah, I think it's just a whole new FAFSA application for this year, so it's not set up all the way. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from trustees? No, thank you so much, and thank you to your team for being here this evening. We appreciate you, thank you. Superintendent Miller?
Trustees, our next presentation is our Federal Grants Quarterly Update, which Mr. Kurtz is going to deliver.
Good evening, President Miller, Board, and Superintendent. Unfortunately, Ms. Danko can't make it tonight, so she's tending to some family business, and I am going to deliver the federal report, quarterly report. This is covering our ESR funds, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, as well as our other federal grants that have been ongoing. Here on page two, it just kind of gives some timeline items of, of what's occurred. Next slide. The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four pre-application was prioritized based on these priorities and these crossover and tie-in with the district's strategic plan. And that's what was used to develop this grant submission last May and June. And we will begin working on the grant submission for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These federal grants typically have a period of performance that begins on or around July first and generally go to the end of September. So they have a little bit longer than a year, and typically, there's an overlap. This page gives us the status of, of each of the grants. So I'm not going to read the numbers, but we have, in the far-left-hand column is our initial allocation of funds. Our largest ongoing grant fund has been the Title I program. But at the very bottom, you'll see that we have the ESR III again. That's the COVID stimulus money that we received that is all concluded as, as of September of this year.
Eric, can you explain how we have to incur the expenses and then submit reimbursements and such?
So all of the federal grant programs that are administered by the state of Indiana through the Indiana Department of Education are reimbursement grants. So we have to spend the funds first, and then we seek reimbursement. We can get reimbursements twice a month. So this is another area that, you know, becomes a concern for me for cash flow, particularly with the ESR funds. It, you know, we have to spend the funds and then seek reimbursement. It typically takes two weeks, or it could be, if you incur the expenditure right after your last reimbursement, it's as much as a month that we have to wait to, to be reimbursed for those expenditures. So we have to be very cautious with our cash flow because of our lower cash balances. Is there any other questions on the slide that, that you want to ask specifically? Otherwise, I'll move on to the next page.
Madam President?
Trustee Murphy.
There's actually something on here I never see. So let's go with Title II, Continuation of Twenty-two, Twenty-three Grant, Finishing Up PD Non-Public Schools. They, I thought it was use-it-or-lose-it type thing.
So because of COVID, they did extend some of the, all the federal grants were given extra time. Normally, it is a use-it-or-lose-it, but due to COVID, during the COVID lockdown period, so to speak, we couldn't do professional development in a way that it's been done, where you go in person to places and those kind of things. So there was really inability to spend some funds in some categories. So they extended those. And as of September of this year, everything will be back on, on the usual schedule. So, for example, we'll have two Title II grants that are concluding later this summer.
Thank you.
Isn't there a percentage you can carry over even in a normal year?
Yeah. In Title I, Title I has, normally, you can carry over fifteen percent of Title I into a subsequent year. And then there's a concept called an Educational Flexibility Waiver. That school city of Hammond secured, and that allows us to carry over a larger amount.
All right, additional questions? Hearing none.
On the next page, talks about learning loss. I know that's been brought up a lot. This shows how much was allocated for learning loss out of the funds, how much has been expended, and how much is remaining. And the notes kind of cover the targeted uses of those funds.
Madam President?
Trustee Blake King.
Mr. Kurtz, I mean, I've said this before. The ESR III funds that has been used for tutoring, remediation, and stipends in terms of, we received a total of over sixty-three million dollars, and it seems we use less than one percent of that money to tutor our kids for remediation, so forth and so on. It just, it just bothers me that we didn't have enough foresight, especially when we, when we realized this whole spending was tied to our strategic plan, when it talks about student achievement, retention, student success, commitment to DEI. And we, we spent little, less than one percent of that sixty-three million dollars to help our kids. And we, we have watched, we have literally watched year by year by year how the test scores have been declining. But yet, we seemingly put little or no money towards that. I know you can't explain it, but I, it just bothers me. And, and we're stuck, and now the money's gone.
Well, I mean, even if you look at the remaining balance, we're having trouble spending it.
The remaining balance, based on what we had, what do you, what do we plan on doing with the remaining balance in terms of the loss of learning?
Mr. Kurtz?
Five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars, compared to the sixty-three million we had to deal with loss of learning. What do we plan on doing with this money? That's going to make a dent, that we can actually see some progress. On tonight's agenda is the PSAT data. And it doesn't look very good at all based on what is actually happening in real time, opposed to how much money we have actually put to this situation.
Mr. Kurtz, I'm going to allow Superintendent Miller to respond.
So the, the numbers that are up here is what is left from the last time that we did a, a allocation. If you look in the, in the bullets that are up on the screen there, you can see that using, to address learning loss, we've done a variety of things. Hired middle-school alternative program teachers, high-school alternative program teachers, eighteen student-support specialists, eleven instructional parapros, seven student-support parapros, split-funded, eleven pre-K teachers and parapros, forty-two interventionists. Interventionists, that's education word, but they are people who directly work with students who are behind. Twenty-two instructional coaches. So that's a much larger number than what's reflected on the screen there. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to pay for all that in seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So it's, that is what is left of those, those funds from the final allocation. But we, we have done a lot of things to try to address it. Have they, have they been as successful as anyone in this room would want? No, there's a lot of challenges, and I wish the data was better. And I agree, the PSAT data is nothing anyone should be proud of. But, but to say that we haven't done anything is inaccurate, in my opinion.
Madam President?
Trustee Blake King.
I didn't say we haven't done anything. I said we haven't done enough. And if you, if you could triple those numbers that you just read, based on the money we had, we had the money to triple. We could have had thirty-three instructional paraprofessionals, and I can go on and on and on. We didn't do enough, period. And I'll stand on that.
Mr. Kurtz, if you'd like to continue your presentation?
I'm sure he would. Thank you.
On next slide, please. So this slide just really takes a look at the COVID stimulus funds and through the, through the negotiations process with, with the various groups that we work with, this is how much we've allocated to pay employee stipends. So overall, with the COVID funds, from the total available funds, twenty-six percent of that has gone to, to our employees across our, our work group. So that was a number that I was asked to get together. So that's all I have for this report. If there's any other questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from anyone? Hearing none. Mr. Kurtz, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Superintendent Miller?
Our last presentation of the evening. I see Adam White coming up. He is our test coordinator and data specialist to present some of our college board data. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Miller, school board trustees, and Superintendent Miller. Tonight, I'll be reviewing the PSAT data from three assessments administered during the first semester, including PSAT VIII, PSAT IX, and the PSAT NMSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, that that is administered to both tenth and eleventh grade. I will end my presentation tonight with a review of last spring's SAT data to establish a comparison for the upcoming SAT this spring. But there are a few points that I want to make before looking at the data. First of all, the school city of Hammond utilizes the PSAT from eighth grade through eleventh grade to track growth and to monitor student proficiency. Because the SAT is the state accountability assessment required for all eleventh-grade students to take, administering the PSAT at these grades serves as a predictor of overall proficiency in the SAT as students progress towards the spring semester of their junior year. The format of the PSAT is the same from PSAT VIII to PSAT IX to the PSAT NMSQT assessment. Students are assessed on the same skills from year to year. However, the depth of these skills increases throughout the PSAT progression. For more information on how these skills build on each other from grade to grade, I do encourage you to refer to the provided assessment framework for Digital SAT Suite document. And you can find that starting on page one-seventy. Starting in the spring of twenty twenty-three, the new format of the SAT was rolled out. And starting this past fall, the new format was mirrored in all of the PSAT assessments. I have provided you with several documents outlining in detail the changes to the PSAT and the SAT. But some new features include the assessment being entirely digital, unless there's a print accommodation. Drast, it's drastically shorter, and it is a module-based adaptive assessment.
Adam, before you go any further, I just want to let the audience know. If, he's going to put up a lot of data up there. If you want to look at this in the future, we have our Board Docs platform that you can get to from our homepage. There's a public log on everything he's going to talk about, plus a lot of things he's not going to take time to talk about, is publicly available. Like all the disaggregation by subgroup, that is all publicly available if you want to review that at a future time. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and start our data review by looking at the overall PSAT VIII benchmark performance of eighth grade with a comparison to twenty-two and twenty-one. Three percent, or seventeen, students in the district met both of the benchmarks. I do want to pause here just for full clarity. Students do take two different, PSAT is comprised of two different contents. One is math, and then one is reading and writing. Each are considered a benchmark. So three percent, or seventeen, students in the district met both of those benchmarks. This is a decrease of six percentage points from both twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-one. Both were at nine percent. Seventeen percent, or a hundred-and-thirteen students, met one benchmark. This is down ten percentage points from twenty-twenty-two and seven percentage points from twenty-twenty-one. Eighty percent, or five-hundred-and-thirty eighth-grade students met neither the math nor the reading or writing benchmark. This is an increase of sixteen percentage points from twenty-twenty-two and thirteen percentage points from twenty-twenty-one. When viewing the benchmark performance by school, both middle schools had similar results. Like at the district level, both schools experienced a decrease from past years in the percentage of students meeting both benchmarks, and the percentage of students meeting one benchmark, and an increase in the percentage of students meeting no benchmark. The most significant movement occurred at Scott Middle School with an increase of students meeting no benchmark from fifty-nine percent in twenty-twenty-two to eighty percent in twenty-twenty-three. For the reading and writing- For the reading and writing benchmark, eighteen percent, or one hundred and twenty-one students in the district met or exceeded the benchmark proficiency. This is a decrease in proficiency of thirteen percentage points from both 2022 and 2021. Ten percent, or sixty-three, of the district's eighth grade students are approaching proficiency, while seventy-two percent, or four hundred and seventy-six, students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of fourteen percentage points from 2022 and twelve percentage points from 2021 in students not yet approaching proficiency. In 2023, while Eggers and Scott had a similar percentage of students meeting or exceeding the benchmark proficiency, and that was eighteen percent, or fifty-five students at Eggers, and nineteen percent, or sixty-six students for Scott, the difference in school performance is most significant at the not yet approaching level. Sixty-nine percent, or two hundred and thirty-nine, students are not yet approaching proficiency at Scott compared to seventy-five percent, or two hundred and thirty-seven, students at Eggers. For this proficiency placement, both schools experienced a significant decrease in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding proficiency, and an increase in the percentage of students not yet approaching proficiency from 2022. For Eggers, there is a nine percentage point decrease in meeting proficiency and fifteen percent increase in students not yet approaching, and for Scott, there is a sixteen percentage point decrease in students meeting proficiency and a thirteen percentage point increase in students not yet approaching proficiency since 2022. Up until this year, domain performance was reported similarly to overall benchmark performance. However, this year, College Board now provides this information in a detailed band placement, allowing both students and educators to gain a more accurate understanding of where the student is currently performing. Both students and educators take the utilized, excuse me, take the identified proficiency band for a specific domain, and can utilize an online database provided by College Board to obtain information on what the student can do and the most appropriate next steps based on that proficiency band. Here, you can view the proficiency bands for tested, for each tested domain for the reading and writing benchmark. For eighth grade, bands two and above represent students who are on track to be college and career-ready, and who have demonstrated proficiency for that domain. Students who have not yet demonstrated proficiency and are at risk of not being college and career-ready are noted in red. Each domain shows a comparison of the district performance to the state and each participating Hammond school. As a district, craft and structure had the highest percentage of students showing proficiency at forty-six percent, with fifty-four percent not proficient. This is compared to sixty-five percent of assessed eighth graders in the state testing proficient in craft and structure, which is also the state's highest performing domain. Standard English Conventions is the domain with the greatest percentage of students not proficient at seventy-five percent, followed very closely by Expression of Ideas at seventy-four percent. The two domains are also the domains with the state's highest percentages of students not proficient, and that's fifty percent for Standard English Conventions and fifty-one percent for Expression of Ideas. Craft and Structure was Eggers' strongest domain at forty-four percent proficiency. Standard English Conventions with seventy-eight percent and Expression of Ideas at seventy-seven percent were the domains with the greatest percentage of students not proficient. The same is said for Scott, with the highest proficiency domain being Craft and Structure at fifty-three percent proficient, and both Standard English Conventions and Expression of Ideas with the lowest proficiency rate at seventy-seven percent. You can move on to the next slide, thank you. For the math benchmark, four percent, or twenty-six, eighth grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of ten percentage points from twenty-two and seven percentage points from 2021. Five percent, or thirty-six, students are approaching proficiency, while ninety-one percent, or five hundred and ninety-eight, students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of thirteen percentage points from 2022 and fourteen percentage points from 2021 in the not yet approaching placement. In 2023, Eggers had six percent, or nineteen, students meeting or exceeding proficiency compared to Scott at two percent, or seven students. For Eggers, this is a decrease of six percentage points from 2022 and seven percentage points from 2021. For Scott, this is a decrease of fifteen percentage points from 2022 and seven percentage points from 2021. The percentage of students approaching proficiency has continued to decline since 2021 for both middle schools. When reviewing the results for students not yet approaching proficiency, Eggers had eighty-nine percent, or two hundred and eighty, students. This is an eight percentage point increase since 2022 and twelve percentage point increase since 2021. Scott had ninety-two percent, or three hundred and eighteen, students not yet approaching proficiency, a seventeen percent point, percentage point increase since 2022, and a fifteen percentage point increase since 2021. Here, the eighth grade domain placements for the math benchmark can be seen, bands three and above represent proficiency as indicated in red for bands one and two. Problem solving had the highest percentage of district eighth grade students performing at proficiency at nineteen percent. Algebra had the highest percentage of district eighth graders placing below proficiency at ninety percent. When compared to the state performance, problem solving and data analysis also had the highest percentage of Indiana eighth grade students placing proficient at fifty percent. However, Advanced Math was the state domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient at sixty-nine percent, compared to our district at eighty-seven percent. Problem solving and data analysis was the domain with the highest percentage of students placing proficient for both schools, twenty-one percent at Eggers and seventeen percent at Scott. Algebra was the domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient at both schools, with Eggers at eighty-seven percent and Scott at ninety-two percent. Go to the next slide, please. All right, we're going to go and switch our focus to PSAT nine. Here you can see the overall PSAT nine benchmark performance for ninth grade with a comparison to twenty-two and twenty-one. Three percent, or twenty-five, ninth grade students in the district met both benchmarks. This is a decrease of four percentage points from 2022 and six percentage points from 2021. Eighteen percent, or one hundred and forty-three, students met one benchmark, down two percentage points from twenty-two and seven percentage points from 2021. Seventy-eight percent, or six hundred and five, students met neither the math nor the reading and writing benchmark. This is an increase of five percentage points from 2022 and eleven percentage points from 2021. When viewing the benchmark performance by school, both high schools had similar results. Like at the district level, both schools experienced a decrease from past years in the percentage of students meeting both benchmarks. While Morton experienced a decrease of seven percentage points from twenty-five percent to nineteen percent of students meeting one benchmark from twenty-two to twenty-three, Hammond Central saw an increase of two percentage points from sixteen percent to eighteen percent. Both schools had an increase in the percentage of students meeting neither benchmark from twenty-two to twenty-three, from seventy-six percent to seventy-nine percent at Hammond Central, and from sixty-eight percent to seventy-seven percent at Morton. For the reading and writing benchmark, twenty-one percent, or one hundred and sixty, students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of two percentage points from both 2022 and 2021. Nine percent, or seventy-one, of our district's ninth grade students are approaching proficiency, while seventy percent, or five hundred and forty-two, students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of two percentage points from 2022 and ten percentage points from 2021 in the not yet approaching placement. In 2023, Hammond Central and Morton had similar percentages of students meeting or exceeding proficiency, with twenty percent, or eighty-six, students at Hammond Central compared to twenty-two percent, or seventy-four, students at Morton. While Morton experienced a decrease of six percentage points at this proficiency level from twenty-eight percent to twenty-two percent since 2022, Hammond Central increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding proficiency since 2022 from nineteen percent to twenty percent. The more significant difference in school performance is in the not yet approaching placement. Seventy-three percent, or three hundred and fifteen, students at Hammond Central are not yet approaching proficiency, compared to sixty-six percent, or two hundred and twenty-seven Hammond Central students. While both schools experienced a minimal increase in the percentage of students not yet approaching proficiency from 2022 to 2023, the increase is more significant when viewing the trend since 2021. Hammond Central with an increase of nine percentage points from sixty-four percent to seventy-three percent, and Morton with an increase of ten percentage points from fifty-six percent to sixty-six percent. Here you can view the proficiency bands for each tested domain for reading and writing. For ninth grade, bands two and above represent students who are on track to be college and career-ready and who have demonstrated proficiency in the domain. Each domain shows a comparison of the district performance to the state and each participating Hammond school. As a district, craft and structure had the highest percentage of students showing proficiency at forty-five percent, with fifty-five percent not proficient. This is compared to seventy-three percent of assessed ninth graders in the state testing proficient in craft and structure, which is also the state's highest performing domain. Expression of Ideas is the domain with the greatest percentage of district students not proficient at sixty-seven percent, followed closely by Standard English Conventions at sixty-five percent. The two domains are also the domains with the state's highest percentages of students not proficient, and that's forty-three percent for Expression of Ideas, and forty percent for Standard English Conventions. Craft and Structure was Hammond Central's strongest domain at fifty-three percent proficiency, and Expression of Ideas at sixty-nine percent was the domain with the greatest percentage of students not proficient. The same is said for Morton with the highest proficiency domain being Craft and Structure at fifty-eight percent, and Expression of Ideas with the lowest proficiency rate, and that's at sixty-five percent proficient. For the math benchmark, four percent, or thirty-three, ninth grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of eight percentage points from both 2022 and seven percentage points from 2021. Four percent, or thirty-four, students are approaching proficiency, while ninety-one percent, or seven hundred and six, students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase in the not yet approaching placement of nine percentage points from 2022 and seven percentage points from 2021. The math benchmark performance between the two high schools was similar in twenty-three. Hammond Central had four percent, or seventeen, students meeting or exceeding proficiency, four percent, or sixteen, students approaching, and ninety-two percent, or three hundred and ninety-eight, students not yet approaching proficiency. This is compared to Morton with five percent, or sixteen, students meeting or exceeding, five percent, or eighteen, students approaching, and ninety percent, or three hundred and eight, not yet approaching proficiency. Hammond Central's experienced an eight percentage point decrease in students meeting or exceeding proficiency from twenty-two, and a six percentage point decrease from, since 2021. Morton decreased in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding by six percentage points from 2022 and seven percentage points from 2021. For the not yet approaching performance placement, Hammond Central experienced an increase in twelve percentage points since twenty-two and five percentage points from twenty-one. Morton increased six percentage points from twenty-two and nine percentage points from twenty-one of students not yet approaching math proficiency. Here are the ninth grade domain placements for the math benchmark, bands three and above represent proficiency as indicated in red for bands one and two. Problem solving had the highest percentage of district's ninth grade students performing at proficiency at twenty-seven percent. Like eighth grade, algebra had the highest percentage of district's ninth graders placing below proficiency at eighty-four percent. When compared to the state performance, problem solving also had the highest percentage of Indiana ninth grade students placing proficient at fifty-seven percent. However, Advanced Math was the state domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient at fifty-eight percent, and that's compared to eighty-two percent in our district. Problem solving and data analysis and geometry were the domains with the highest percentage of students placing proficient, and Hammond Central both with a twenty-three percent proficiency rate. Problem solving and data analysis was the domain with the highest proficiency at Morton with a rate of thirty-two percent. Algebra was the domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient with, at both schools, with Hammond Central at eighty, at eighty-six percent, and Morton at eighty-one percent. You can go to the next slide, thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a look at the PSAT NMSQT assessment, we're going to take a look at the two grade levels separately, so we'll take a look at tenth grade first. Here, you can see the overall PSAT NMSQT benchmark performance for tenth grade, again with those comparisons. Three percent, or twenty-six, students in the district met both benchmarks. This is a decrease of two percentage points from 2022 and four percentage points from Eighteen percent, or one hundred and thirty-eight, students met one benchmark, this is down three percentage points from 2022 and eleven percentage points from 2021. Seventy-eight percent, or five hundred and ninety-five, students met neither the math nor the reading and writing benchmark. This is an increase of four percentage points from twenty-two and an increase of fourteen percentage points from 2021. When viewing the benchmark performance by school, again, both schools had similar results. Like at the district level, both schools experienced a decrease from past years in the percentage of students meeting both benchmarks. Hammond Central increased the number of students meeting at least one benchmark from eighteen percent to nineteen percent between twenty-two and twenty-three, and Morton decreased by seven percentage points in the same performance category. Hammond Central saw a slight increase of one percentage points of students meeting neither benchmark from seventy-six percent in twenty-two to twenty-three percent in twenty-one. Morton, however, saw a greater increase of nine percentage points from seventy-one percent in twenty-two to eighty percent in twenty-one, excuse me, in twenty-three. For the reading and writing benchmark, twenty-one percent, or one hundred and sixty-three, tenth grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of two percentage points from twenty-two and thirteen percentage points from twenty-one. Seven percent, or fifty-two, of our district's tenth grade students are approaching proficiency, while seventy-two percent, or five hundred and forty-four, students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase in the not yet approaching placement of three percentage points from twenty-two and fifteen percentage points from twenty-one. When comparing school performance, Hammond Central had a slightly higher percentage of students meeting or exceeding proficiency than Morton in 2023, and that's twenty-three percent compared to twenty percent. Morton had a two percentage point higher number of students approaching proficiency. The percentage of students not yet approaching was similar between the two schools, Hammond Central at seventy-one percent and Morton at seventy-two percent. Hammond Central experienced a slight increase of students meeting or exceeding proficiency at twenty-two percent in twenty-two to twenty-three percent in twenty-three. Morton's percentage of students at this level, however, decreased from twenty-five percent in twenty-two to twenty percent in twenty-one. Overall, both schools have seen a dramatic decrease in proficiency since 2021, with Hammond Central going from thirty percent in twenty-one to twenty-three percent in twenty-two, and Morton decreasing from thirty-seven percent in twenty-one to twenty percent in twenty-three. Here you can view the proficiency bands for the tested domains for reading and writing. For tenth grade, bands three and above represent those who are on track and proficient. You can note the bands one and two in red. As a district, like with both eighth and ninth grade, craft and structure had the highest percentage of students showing proficiency at forty-one percent, with fifty-nine not proficient. This is compared to sixty-one percent of assessed tenth graders in the state testing This is compared to 61% of assessed 10th graders in the state testing proficient in craft and structure, which is the state's highest performing domain along with information and ideas. Expression of Ideas is the domain with the greatest percentage of district students not proficient at 77%. Standard English Conventions is the state domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient at 53%, and that's compared to our district at 75%. Craft and Structure was Hammond Central's strongest domain, 39% proficiency, and Expression of Ideas at 77% was the domain with the greatest percentage of students not proficient. The same is said for Morton with the highest proficiency domain being Craft and Structure at 44%, and Expression of Ideas with the lowest proficiency rate at 77%. For the math benchmark, 4% or 27 10th grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of four percentage points from both 2022 and five percentage points from 2021. 5% or 39 students are approaching proficiency while 91% or 693 students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of eight percentage points from 2022 and 15 percentage points from 2021 in the not yet approaching placement. Both high schools had similar performance results in 2023. Hammond Central had 4% or 17 students meeting or exceeding proficiency. This is a decrease of three percentage points from '22 and '21. 5% or 20 students approaching proficiency, a decrease of three percentage points from '22 and eight percentage points from 2021, and 91% or 393 students not yet approaching proficiency, a six percentage point increase from 2022, and a nine percentage point increase from 2021. Morton had 3% or 10 students meeting or exceeding proficiency in 2023. This is a decrease of seven percentage points from '22 and nine percentage points from '21. 6% or 19 students approaching proficiency, a three percentage point decrease from 2022 and a 10 percentage point decrease from 2021, and 91% or 300 students not yet approaching proficiency. This is a 10 percentage point increase from 2022 and a 19 percentage point increase from 2021. Here the 10th grade domain placements for the math benchmark can be seen. Bands four and above represent proficiency as indicated in red for bands one, two, and three. Like eighth and ninth grade, problem solving and data analysis had the highest percentage of district's 10th grade students performing at proficiency at 15%. Advanced Math had the highest percentage of district's 10th graders placing below proficiency at 96%. When compared to the state performance, problem solving and data analysis also had the highest percentage of Indiana 10th grade students placing proficient, and that was at 42%. Advanced Math was also the state domain with the highest percentage of students not proficient at 74%. Problem solving and data analysis was the domain with the highest percentage of students placing proficient for both schools, 14% at Hammond Central and 17% at Morton. Both schools also had the same domain with the greatest percentage of students below proficiency, and that was Advanced Math, with a rate of 95% at Hammond Central and 97% at Morton. All right, and finally with our PSAT, 11th grade. 2% or 33 students in the district met both benchmarks. This is a decrease of three percentage points from 2022 and five percentage points from 2021. 19% or 174 students met one benchmark, down six percentage points from 2022 and four percentage points from 2021. 79% or 484 students met neither the math nor the reading and writing benchmark, an increase of nine percentage points from '22 and '21. When viewing the benchmark performance by schools, the trend is that both high schools, again, had similar results. Like at the district level, both schools experienced that decrease from past years in the percentage of students meeting both benchmarks. Hammond Central experienced a decrease of two percentage points from 4% to 2% of students meeting both benchmarks from '22 to '23. Morton experienced a decrease of three percentage points from 6% to 3%. Both schools saw a decrease in the percentage of students meeting one benchmark and a significant increase in the percentage of students meeting no benchmarks, an 11 percentage point increase at Hammond Central between 2022 and 2023, and a 7 percentage point increase at Morton from 2022 to 2023. I do want to just pause here for one second. In looking at our 11th grade PSAT data, it is important to note that this is the most accurate predictor of the upcoming SAT because it is this exact same group of students that in one month's time will be taking the SAT. So the skills that they're going to be assessed, while not the exact same questions, it is the same level of skills that they are going to be tested over. So if we're going to talk about a practice SAT in terms of assessing performance, this 11th grade PSAT and MSQT assessment gives us the best idea. For the reading and writing benchmark, 21% or 167 11th grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of eight percentage points from both 2022 and 2021. 9% or 73 of our district 11th grade students are approaching proficiency while 70% or 567 students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase in the not yet approaching placement of 11 percentage points from 2022 and 13 percentage points from 2021. In 2023, there was a two percentage point difference in meeting or exceeding proficiency between the two schools, Hammond Central at 20% and Morton at 22%. While both schools had 9% of their 11th grade students approaching proficiency, there was a slight difference in the percentage of students needing to strengthen the skills. Hammond Central at 21% compared to Morton at 69%. In comparing school performance from the past three years, Morton has experienced a steady decline in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding proficiency, and that was 30% in 2021 to 28% in 2022 to 22% in 2023. Hammond Central had a slight increase between 2021 and '22 from 29% to 30%. However, the school did experience a decline in students meeting or exceeding the benchmark from 30% in 2022 to 20% in 2023. Here you can see the proficiency bands, next slide, please. Thank you. For the reading and writing benchmark, for 11th grade, bands three and above represent college and career ready and proficiency. The bands below are indicated in red. As a district, just like eighth, ninth, and 10th grade, craft and structure had the highest percentage of students showing proficiency at 49% with 51 not proficient. This is compared to 69% of assessed 11th graders in the state testing proficient in craft and structure, which, again, is the state's highest performing domain. Standard English Conventions is the domain with the greatest percentage of students below proficiency at 71%, which is also the state's domain with the highest percentage of 11th graders below proficiency at 45%. Craft and Structure was both Hammond Central and Morton's strongest domain at 49% for Hammond Central and 51% for Morton. Both schools also saw Standard English Conventions as the domain with the highest percentage of students below proficiency, 73% at Hammond Central and 70% at Morton. All right, for the math benchmark, 2% or 18 of our 11th grade students in the district met or exceeded proficiency. This is a decrease of four percentage points from both 2022 and five percentage points from 2021. 4% or 32 students are approaching proficiency while 94% or 757 students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of nine percentage points from 2022 and eight percentage points from 2021 for the not yet approaching placement. When looking at the performance of each high school, 2% or eight students at Hammond Central met or exceeded, a decrease of three percentage points from 2022 and five percentage points from 2021. 3% or 14 students were approaching, a five percentage point decrease from 2022 and 3% decrease from 2021. 95% or 418 students are not yet approaching proficiency. This is an increase of eight percentage points from both 2022 and 2021. For Morton, 3% or 10 students met or exceeded proficiency in 2023, a four percentage point decrease from '22 and '21. 5% or 18 students were approaching proficiency, a four percentage point decrease from 2022 and a two percentage point decrease from 2021. 92% or 339 students are not yet approaching proficiency. At Morton, this is an increase of eight percentage points from 2022 and six percentage points from 2021. And our 11th grade domain placements for math, bands four and above represent proficiency. Like grades eight, nine, and 10, problem solving and data analysis had the highest percentage of district's 11th grade students performing at proficiency, and that's at 21%. Advanced Math had the highest percentage of students below proficiency at 92%. When compared to the state performance, problem solving and data analysis also had the highest percentage of Indiana 11th grade students placing proficient, and that was at 50%. Additionally, Advanced Math was the state domain with the highest percentage of students below proficiency at 62%. Both high schools saw problem solving and data analysis as the domain with the highest percentage of students proficient, 22% at Hammond Central, 21% at Morton. Advanced Math was the domain at both schools with the highest percentage of students below proficiency with 94% at Hammond Central and 91% at Morton. We are going to do a very quick look, very quick look, it's three slides, at SAT. And then I will dance for you. As we approach this year's spring 2024 SAT administration, which is a mandated accountability assessment for all 11th grade students, it is important to establish a baseline for comparison now that we have a better idea on how our students are currently performing. Here you can see the proficiency rates per the Indiana Department of Education from last spring's SAT administration, which reflect the data of our current seniors who participated in this assessment last year. To pass the SAT according to the IDOE, the Indiana Department of Education, students must meet the proficiency levels for both the reading and writing benchmark and the math benchmark. This becomes their composite performance. In the spring of 2023, 6% or 44 of our then 11th grade testers achieved SAT proficiency and 94% or 687 students were not proficient or did not pass the SAT. Compared to the state's passing rate of 27%, the district is 21 percentage points below. The district is also 21 percentage points higher than the state in the percentage of students not proficient, 94% compared to 73% for the state. Last year's proficiency performance mirrored the SAT performance in the district for 2022. The state, however, did experience a slight decrease in the percentage of students placing proficient and a slight increase in the students placing not proficient from '22 to '23. When looking at the school-based results, Hammond Central had 3% or 13 students place proficient and 97% or 379 students not proficient. This is a three percentage point decrease in proficiency from 2022. Morton had 9% or 31 students achieve proficiency and 91% or 308 students not proficient in 2023. This is an increase in proficiency of two percentage points from 2022. Next slide. Here the results for the SAT reading and writing benchmark can be seen. 27% or 195 students placed at or above the proficient benchmark level. This is compared to 49% at the state level. 8% or 57 of our district's students were approaching and 66% or 479 students were below the proficiency benchmark. This is compared to 7% and 43% at the state level. From '22 to '23, the district increased the percentage of students at proficiency for this benchmark by two percentage points, from 25% to 27%. While this is a positive step, the performance trended downward with a decrease of five percentage points from 13% to 8% at the approaching proficiency level and an increase of five percentage points from 61% to 66 at the below proficiency level. When comparing the two high schools, Hammond Central had 24% or 95 students place proficient, a three percentage point decrease from 2022. Morton High School had 29% or 100 students place proficient. This is a five percentage point increase from 2022. Hammond Central experienced a decrease in the percentage of students approaching proficiency, 14% to 8%, and an increase of nine percentage points of students below proficiency from 59% below to 68% below. While the percentage of students placing below proficiency remained the same at 63% in both '22 and '23, Morton experienced a decrease of six percentage points of students approaching proficiency between 2022 and 2023, which can be reflected in the increase of students placing proficient. And finally, for the math benchmark, 7% or 49 district students placed at proficiency. This is 23 percentage points below the state, but a one percentage point increase from 2022. 4% or 27 students were approaching proficiency compared to 9% at the state level and 17% in 2022. 90% or 655 students placed below proficiency. This is 28 percentage points greater than the state and an increase of 14 percentage points from 2022. When comparing schools, 4% or 15 students in Hammond Central placed at proficiency compared to 10% or 34 students at Morton. While Hammond Central experienced a two percentage point decrease at this level from 2022, Morton increased the percentage of students at proficiency by three percentage points. Both Hammond Central and Morton had 4% of their testers approaching proficiency, that's 14 students at Hammond Central and 13 students at Morton. This is a 13 percentage point decrease for Hammond Central and a 15 percentage point decrease at Morton between 2022 and 2023. 93% or 363 Hammond Central students placed below proficiency compared to 86% or 292 students for Morton. Between 2022 to 2023, this is a 15 percentage point increase for Hammond Central and a 12 percentage point increase for Morton. Okay, for the sake of time, for trustee Murphy.
Thank you.
I included several slides that broke down the over, I'm not going to go over it, that show by cohort their, some of the prior year's tests and their proficiency placement for each separate benchmark. So if we're taking a look at students, the same students, comparing the same students, that'll give you a better idea instead of by grade. Okay, any questions?
Any questions from the trustees? Trustee Blake King?
Madam President, Mr. White, overall, give us a summation of all of this, can you? Is it possible? I mean, we have parents listening, just a simple summation of where we are and where we're going.
Yeah, I would say in general, our students do much better in reading and writing than we do in math. I would state the difference between those two contents are pretty drastic. Generally, when we take a look at proficiency rates when we deal with math, we're dealing in the same in the single digits with proficiency. We tend to be higher twenties, potentially 30% proficient when it comes to more of the English language arts, reading and writing content. I would say in general, year to year, we are seeing more of a decline in proficiency, with some exceptions, as noted, in both of the content areas. I do want to state that the test this year for PSAT, and then again going into SAT, was a very different test. And so I'm not using that to justify any decrease or the significance of the decreases that we experienced from last year to this year, but I do think it should be noted that it was a different approach to the test, how questions were structured, same skills being assessed, but the presentation of those skills through the structure of the questions. Different things, for example, the math benchmark was all calculator. Prior, there were multiple sections, and sometimes it would be calculator, sometimes it would not be. It was also, to a certain degree, computer adaptive. It's actually a module adapted, so it's not to the extent that a computer adaptive test continually is leveling students based on their correctness, but how they do in Module One of a content determines which level of Module Two they get. It was a self-paced test as opposed to last year. It was much, the proctors had more of a role in it, and it was a very, it was much, it was a much shorter test this year than last year. So things that were factored into other things that we couldn't necessarily control outside of demonstrating skill proficiency.
Are there any programs or curriculum that could, that could help our kids do better on testing? Is that out there?
Yes.
Or purchase, or whatever.
Yeah, I'm sure to purchase, but College Board partners with Khan Academy as their, their main partnership with supporting students in both, practicing how to take these PSAT and SAT assessments, but also serving as remediation. So with iReady, which is our district diagnostic assessments, one of the great things about that program is when the student takes the diagnostic based on how well they perform, they have those individualized student pathways, which are filled with the remediation needed based on how students performed. Khan Academy does the same thing now. So I can take a student's score on PSAT IX, I put it in there with some other data points, and a pathway that is somewhat unique to that student's need is then generated. So it can be used as a remediation tool, and Khan Academy, even outside of their partnership with College Board, is a really well-known and highly respected program to use, and one of their main philosophies is it to be accessible for all students. I use Khan Academy with my kids at home, so it is a great program, and of course, there are other programs that do cost money.
Trustee Blykking, we do use the Khan Academy at secondary schools already, that partnership, yes.
Yep.
Other questions from the board? Other questions?
Madam President.
Trustee Murphy.
So when we started this journey a year ago, when we were talking about Scott and Eggers going into, Dr. Reese, help me with that, root causes. What are the root causes?
Comprehensive school improvement.
Thank you, comprehensive school improvement. So we were going to identify root causes and work around those things. So we also got this other data in here. What are our root causes? And what are we doing to get around? I love Khan Academy. I met him a gazillion years ago, he was much younger, at an NSBA thing. So it's a wonderful thing, but, and with our Chromebooks, our students can do that, is getting to that. But that's probably my first question is, like you talked about it before, we get the data, we come back, we do some changes. I like the other one because usually our teachers are getting an increase, but this is a one-time test. So that's the first question. I can always email it if you guys aren't ready for that one. Email question, okay. The next one, so when we look at these tests, the other state tests for our younger grades, it's like, where should they be? So I had to look up advanced math. What is advanced math? And I'm like, why are we testing advanced math with eighth graders? It seems more like Algebra II. So when you get to learn those things, it's like, no wonder they're not doing that well. Like, here's the one, the SAT, 62% in the state aren't passing this test. So it's no wonder we have a high percentage of students not passing it. So again, I'll send this one an email, where are our students at? So I know we have algebra in eighth grade, but then we don't have a lot of kids passing the algebra part. So are we putting the kids in the right classes? Are we differentiating? Are we actually putting them, maybe they should be pre-algebra instead?
I do want to just respond, if I may, very, very quickly to that. That document, I know it is extensive. You could really ignore the first quarter of that framework, that assessment framework document, because it just talks about the changes with the PSAT. But once you get past that opening section, it breaks it down by reading and writing, which is a big section in of itself, and then the math. It breaks down what ultimately is assessed, how, what types of questions account for each domain, and then it talks all the way down to that skill level. So when we're thinking about, well, what do they mean with advanced math? It will list the exact skills that the students need at each grade. So for eighth grade to ninth grade, 10th to, all the way up to SAT, it will also show how that skill builds on each other. So when I talk about how it's the same skill that's being assessed, but it's the depth of that skill, that really breaks it down to highlight what that means and what that looks like.
Yes, that was a big one. And thank you for the cohort data.
You're welcome.
Folks, I knew it's already been a really long night, but I am going to ask you to kind of keep it down. It does make it really hard for us to hear you appear.
The other question is on my last one, the rest I'll be sending through by email. I know with Indiana, we're going, so it used to be, you read a whole book, everything's in context. Are they still just giving the students that one or two paragraphs and having them trying to figure it out, even though they don't know what the whole book is about?
So if we're taking a look at College Board, like the PSAT suite of assessments from PSAT VIII all the way to SAT, that was one of the major changes in the assessment, that prior, it was like reading stamina. Kids had to really hunker down because it was a longer passage, and now it is much shorter. It's actually a few sentences only up until one paragraph, and there's just one question attached to that. College Board views that as a positive, and speaking with my colleagues, we think that that is actually far more challenging because it eliminates significant context that students could potentially be using.
And again, how do we teach that? It's such different than what we're doing now. How do we get our teachers to be doing that type of thing when we're used to, I like the old model. They read a book, it's relevant, and we go through this, and now we just want to, oh, here's a paragraph out of something. So, thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Other questions from the board?
Madam President.
Trustee Spencer.
I have a couple, probably only one might be for you, though, Mr. White. Are our students practicing? Did they get to practice using the new test prior? Like, did they practice the student-produced response questions? Did they practice using the calculator on there? Because it is significantly different.
It is. So prior to each time the student takes the assessment, they participate in what's called a digital readiness check. By definition, it's really preparing to make sure that their devices are ready and their logins are all together, but this is where they also get their demographic information set up and ready to go. Through that, they do get to practice the test. There are several options for practice. There is a shorter version. There is a full-blown, full-blown practice test as well that they can do. They do receive a login card that they utilize, and it's not a secure item whatsoever, but the students are able to then take that same login, and they could, we use Blue Book, which is the testing application, and even on their own, they can go in there and practice the PSAT or the SAT assessment in terms of the embedded accommodations or features that are there, the use of the calculator, the types of questions, getting used to all of that. So to an extent, it is embedded within the digital readiness check, but also available for students to pursue even further on their own.
Okay, thank you. My next questions might be for you, Mr. Miller, or we might have to forward them to the secondary principals or even Dr. Roush. Do our curriculums, I know we don't teach to the test, but do our curriculums at least match the PSAT and SAT-type questions? Like, are our students seeing those type questions in front of them? Are they put in front of them? Because we know those questions are not skill and drill anymore, they're very in-depth.
Michelle, can you follow up on that, please?
What incentives were the schools giving to students for this test? Why, I mean, why are we telling the students that they need to take this, that they need to perform well on it? It's not a grade. They don't see that direct correlation, so I'm just curious if there were any initiatives or incentives that we were giving to our students to at least hype them up about this, to get excited, to take this and to perform on this?
I'm unaware of any major incentives, Adam, is there some, Ms. Young?
Yeah, some like PSAT celebrations, and I was in eighth grade at the time. So we did like rallies and stuff like that.
I will say that the state took, there's no, there's no high-stakes test kids have to take anymore to graduate. For years and years, there was the I-step, right, where a student had to get proficiency on the I-step to graduate. When they transitioned to the graduation pathways, you can still pass an SAT as one of the ways to fill Bucket Three, but it's not a requirement. So for a lot of kids, there is no incentive that beyond their desire to do well on a test, to take these tests seriously. It is a valid question and point, but I can follow up with our counseling team about what incentives and get you a report on that.
Thank you, and that kind of leads into my next question slash point. So if only 44 total of our current seniors in the school city of Hammond passed the SAT, but we know far more of them are being accepted into colleges, the wonderful Morton counselor team just told us they had over hundreds of exceptions or acceptances. So there's a disconnect there, I believe, with our students. If they don't see that they need it, it's important for us, it's important for you to present to us. I just don't think those low scores are truly indicative of what our students can do and how well that they can perform. So I thank you for bringing this data to us, but I think those of us in education know that it's just not a true indicator of what they're learning and what they're doing.
Yeah, to your point, trustee Spencer, like even the Purdue Honors College no longer looks at the high-stakes test data as a factor for admissions, so.
And I think what's also a struggle with your, to your point, it's, yes, the reality, it's not a reflection of our students' ability. In the eyes of the state, though, it is.
But how do we tell our students to care what the state thinks? Because they don't, and I don't blame them.
All right, other questions from trustees?
Well, this might be a dumb question. Is there any way we can just say we don't want to take these tests? They're mandated.
The only one I think that is mandated mandated is the SAT. That impacts, they've been frozen since COVID, but there still are school letter grades as part of the, how Indiana identifies schools, and there's still the federal indicators as well, and the test they've chosen is the SAT to inform that grade for high schools. So we have to do the SAT. The pre-ones, I don't, Adam, I think I'm correct in saying they don't have to do those.
No, once the SAT became a state-required assessment, the conversation surrounded, what is a great way, or the best way, to both expose the students to the structure of the assessment, this high-stakes assessment that they're taking 11th grade, and what would give us the best way to ultimately track growth from year to year?
Exactly. Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more. I know you said, so the state mandates us to take the SAT, and do we have to pay for the SAT?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, we don't have to pay for the SAT. We actually don't pay for any of these assessments. I'm happy to go into more detail on why we don't, but we don't.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from any other trustees?
I'm sending the rest.
All right, you're going to email the rest?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. White. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our public expression portion of the evening. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of the guidelines for public comment, and if you need a copy of those, they're over on the table where you signed in. Trustee Candelaria.
Public expression, first community member, Rena Horgan.
As she makes her way to the mic, I'm going to just go ahead and add here, as well, as part of our public comment, we don't refer to people by name or title. It would be things like the administration, that sort of thing, as part of our guidelines. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss equity, equity for our students and equity for our school city staff, Hammond staff. On November 9th, 2020, this superintendent was interviewed by the CBS Channel 2 News. You can find this article in its entirety on YouTube, but I'd like to point out a few key phrases that were brought up. When asked if he thought he would deserve the $20,000 raise, he brought up the issue of equity. He said, and I quote, "I think for anybody, whatever your profession and the level of profession that you are working in, to have equity of compensation is only fair." When pushed further, "Do you deserve this raise?", the superintendent said, "Back to the equity issue." In fact, he referred to it five times. That same year, during negotiations, the district gave each teacher only a $1,000 bump in their salary, regardless if it was fair or equitable. The district had been telling the citizens of Hammond for months, prior to negotiations, how cash-strapped they were in 2020 and how they didn't have enough money to pay their teachers what they deserved. If the 2020 school board felt it was fair and equitable to compensate the superintendent his raise, then when we were cash-strapped back in 2020, which was an extravagant ask at the time, why is it not fair to compensate your teachers today with a fair and equitable contract? Let me remind you, this district is still receiving referendum money until the end of the school year, and, until the end of the calendar year, and in fact, we had $12 million in federal relief funds as of November that could have been earmarked for salary compensation for your employees that would have been fair and equitable for their profession. But apparently, this district only sees value in some people and not in their teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, nursing staff, cafeteria workers, or anyone else that works the front line. For us, there is no fair and equitable contract for our professions, but you're forgetting that this administration can't run this district by itself. You need us, and we need this administration to get back to the negotiating table and come up with a fair and equitable contract for all of your frontline employees. Now let's talk fair and equitable for Hammond students. Closing buildings and creating larger class sizes in the remaining buildings is not fair and equitable to our students. Moving them farther away is not fair and equitable to our students. Giving charter schools a chance to obtain vacant school buildings is not fair and equitable to our public school students. You have tried this before, and it never worked. Leaving these decisions to a few select administrators is not fair and equitable to these students. You need to ask these communities and these families what's fair and equitable for their community, and listen, instead of listening to those who have never been fair or equitable to this district. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. As I sit either attending every meeting or watching every meeting, I wonder if you are actually listening to us. I know you are hearing us, at least two of you up there are, maybe three in total, if you include the two sitting on the side. I sat in on one person's interview and asked the question, "How is your relationship when it comes to working with the union?". And the response was, "At my previous school corporation, it was great." You can't You can't get anything accomplished or move forward financially without a beneficial working relationship on both sides" or something close to that. I clearly remember this interaction. I was impressed. My union brothers and sisters were leery when I told them this. I trusted this person's word. I am now wondering, no matter how long this person's reports are, meeting after meeting, we will continue to keep coming back. You can't keep us out. Please don't make a fool out of me or out of yourself. Please keep your word of a beneficial working relationship with the union. It is time to settle this contract. Thank you.
Next community member, Maribel Solano.
Good evening. My name is Maribel Solano. I have been a homeowner in the 3rd District for 21 years. I'm a parent of a student at Wallace. I'm currently employed by School City of Hammond, and I work at Wallace for the LDP Department. I will be reading my message in Spanish to represent our Hispanic families. Estoy aquí para representar a nuestra comunidad hispana. Dirijo mi mensaje directamente al miembro de la junta que representa nuestra herencia hispana que debería de estar luchando por nosotros. He estado traduciendo desde que era niña. Vengo de un hogar donde el español era nuestro primer idioma. Nuestra escuela tiene aproximadamente 49% de estudiantes hispanos y atendemos a más de 70 estudiantes que están aprendiendo inglés. Servimos a seis países hispanos diferentes, incluyendo México, que es Puerto Rico, Estados Unidos, Ecuador, Nicaragua, Colombia, Honduras. Mirando hacia atrás cuando era niña, recuerdo que mis padres recurían a los maestros y personal hispano de mi escuela para buscar ayuda en cosas fuera de la escuela. Ahora entiendo por qué. Ahora Wallace es eso para muchos de nuestros padres. Tienen esa confianza en el personal de la escuela. Tenemos muchos recién llegados que no hablan inglés y con poco tiempo se siente como una casa simplemente porque los tratamos como una familia. La madre de una niña de primer grado se me acercó y me preguntó, "Por qué cierra Wallace? Mi hija está desconsolada, dijo que tiene que ayudar." La mamá solo habla español y se acercó y me dijo, "Señora Solano, ¿qué podemos hacer? No hablo inglés, pero quiero que Wallace permanezca abierta." En ese momento sentí que era mi tiempo para hablar en nombre de todos los padres y estudiantes hispanos. No sé a ustedes, pero mis padres son inmigrantes. Vinieron a este país. Vinieron a este país para ofrecer a su familia una mejor vida. Nuestra familia de Wallace tiene una gran cantidad de estudiantes que viven exactamente la misma experiencia. Entonces, ¿qué podemos hacer para ayudar a nuestra gente? Cerrar una escuela donde se sienten seguros, felices, y lo más importante, donde aprenden, no ayudará. En el nombre de nuestra comunidad hispana, les pido que piensen en el impacto que tendrán nuestros estudiantes al separarlos de lo que hemos podido lograr. Consideren mantener abierto Wallace. Tenemos que ayudar a nuestra gente. These are some of my students that we service on a daily basis. And I really want you guys to consider when you take your decision. There will be a translation after me. Thank you.
Next community member, Claudia Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lopez. I am a Hammond resident and also a product of public schools in Hammond. I am here, I'm going to translate the message that Ms. Solano just gave you guys. I am here to represent our Hispanic community. I address my message directly to the board member that represents our Hispanic heritage and should be fighting for us. I have been translating since I was a child. I come from a home where Spanish was our first language. Our school has approximately 49% Hispanic students, and we serve over 70 English language learners. We serve six different Hispanic countries, including Mexico, US Puerto Rico, Ecuador, Nicaragua, Colombia, Honduras. Looking back as a child, I remember my parents turning to the Hispanic teachers and staff at my school for help with many things outside of school. Now I understand why. Now Wallace is that for many of our parents. They have that trust in our staff at our school. We have many newcomers who do not speak English, and with very little time, they feel at home simply because we treat them like family. A mother of a 1st grader came up to me and asked me, "Why is Wallace going to close?" Her daughter is heartbroken. She said her daughter asked her to help. The mother only speaks Spanish, and she approached me and said, "Ms. Solano, what can we do? I cannot speak English, but I want Wallace to stay open." At that moment, I felt that it was my turn to speak on behalf of my Hispanic parents and students. I don't know about you, but my parents are immigrants. They came to this country to offer their families a better life. Our Wallace family has a large number of students who experience exactly the same experience. So what can we do to help our people? Closing a school where they feel safe, happy, and most importantly, where they learn will not help. On behalf of our Hispanic community, I ask you to think about the impact our students will have by separating them from what we have been able to achieve. Please consider keeping Wallace open. We have to help our people. I am one of those kids. My mom was one of those parents. I remember the struggles me and my family went through, acclimating to a new country and to a new school. The atmosphere that we have created at Wallace means a lot for these families. I can tell you this from the bottom of my heart. We have become their safe place and the connection to many resources in our community. Closing our doors to them means they will have to find another place to get used to and feel familiar. Closing our doors will have a negative impact in our children and in our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez or Ms. Solano, your poster's up here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Yvonne Nojos.
Good evening. Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Miller. My name is Yvonne Nojos. I've been employed by School City of Hammond for 30 years. I am... I am currently the speech-language pathologist at Wallace and Edison Elementary. Although I have been at seven schools since starting in 1994, I have spent my entire career being part of the Wallace family. We are aware that you have all spent weeks studying data, looking at different facts, and comparing schools to each other to figure out which schools you must close. You have been entrusted as elected officials to make a choice that isn't easy. However, it is also your job to make a decision that will cause the least amount of harm to the students inside those buildings. We would like to share with you some facts that we are certain you may not have considered in your decision-making process. For example, are you aware that less than five years ago, almost a quarter of $1 million of federal funds were invested in redoing our Wallace cafeteria with the theme "From Farm to Table"? It's not just decoration. We've been able to educate our students on the role that rural farming communities play in our ability to eat nutritious and healthy meals. Did you know that we were able to use $10,000 to improve our playground that hasn't been updated in over 25 years? Our Wallace staff, students, families, and half a community came out and spent weeks during the summer using stencils and painting vibrant recess activities for students to use. In fact, current trustee made a visit and was excited about our life-size chessboard. What a shame it would be to jeopardize all the time and money invested into improving our building, for it possibly sit dormant for many years to come. Furthermore, have you considered that Wallace will mean hundreds of our students will be forced to cross the intersection of Calumet and 165th? Coming from Williams and Doty Streets, they will be forced to cross Holman and Calumet, putting our students harms way daily. Their lives are at risk. Lastly, our motto, "Growing Greatness," can be seen everywhere at 6235 Jefferson. We've grown our parent PTA with over 100 members. I Ready scores are growing. Third highest in growth on the I Ready Administration.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
So we ask...
I am sorry, ma'am. Your time is up. Your time is up, ma'am. I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Don't forget your sign.
Mr. Suarez, can you do me a favor? Oh, somebody's going to come to get it. Thank you.
Next community member, Mary Ellen Slasik.
My grandchildren are not talking, and I'm talking for them. I'm Mary Ellen Slasik, and these are three of my grandchildren. And once they're going to Wallace, the school y'all want to close. I want you to see their faces. I want you to realize what's been happening with the previous school closures and consolidations, how this is hurting the children and hurting the neighborhoods. Get a good look at the faces of these kids. All these kids here today, they're going to be hurt by your decisions. So far, the decisions haven't been very good at all, for formality's sake. This is my granddaughter, Jaleah. This is my youngest grandson, AJ. And this is Zachary, one of my other grandsons. I got seven altogether of these youngest ones. I got one going to Eggers. You need to think before you vote. So far, all the school consolidations, closures have ended up in nothing but grades, test scores falling, falling, and falling. Keep on falling. It's not the teachers' fault. The buck stops at 41 Williams. We got a mess over here. I've been going to school board meetings for over 30 years, and I've watched it decline. And I know when some of you came here and said on the board, "It was already broken," but you had a chance to fix it, and you did it. Instead, you made it worse. You made it worse for our kids. You made it worse for our educators of our children and my grandchildren. That's not fair to anybody here. It's not fair to the taxpayers either. I've been a homeowner in Hammond for, I hate to admit, 50 years. I've been paying my share of taxes, and I'm happy to help the schools out. I used to volunteer in the schools all the time. My kids were younger, I was there. And I also donated stuff to schools. I believe in education. But what's happening here is not education, it's a disaster. An absolute disaster. There's no reason for this. Our kids are suffering, and they're going to suffer more by more school closures. Where are these kids going to go? A lot of them have left Hammond. They're going to private schools or being homeschooled. I don't blame their parents. Would I want my kids to have to walk a long distance to school? When I had my previous home, because I did downsize, but all my kids weren't at home yet, I bought the home that I did because it was right by the schools. And my first house, I bought that one because it was right down the street from Irving. And that's what keeps the neighborhoods together when you have a school. Don't fail our kids. Right now, you're failing them. I can't believe the scores I seen tonight. It breaks my heart. I remember when I went to Hammond High, class of 71. We had a 96% graduation rate. What happened?
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Next community member, Robin Bellamy.
Good evening. Good evening, school board members and superintendent and concerned community members. I only had a few things to say this evening, but after watching all three presentations, I have a lot more, so I'm going to try to hopefully fit it all in. Does anybody else find it ironic that we recognized counselors tonight, and yet counselors are on the chopping block? Does anybody else find it ironic that the district says that mental health is a priority, and yet counselors are on the chopping block? Does anyone else find it ironic that the district says it is a priority to have college and career readiness, and yet counselors are on the chopping block? Franklin, the only elementary school recognized by the counselors this evening, has a career fair that not only services our 3rd through 6th graders, but every 6th grader in the district is invited to come. That is college and career readiness. And yet Franklin is on the chopping block. Moving on, I saw a presentation on the ESAR grant pre-application, and one of the goals is to retain students and staff. Well, how are we going to retain students if we close schools? People are not going to go to other Hammond schools. They're going to take their vouchers and go somewhere else. That not only loses our students, but also money. How are you going to retain staff if we don't have a contract? Would any of you be here tonight without knowing how much you were being paid to be here? Would any of you be sitting here tonight if you didn't know if you were going to get paid tonight? The teachers are only asking for a fair contract. It is my understanding that the district has been told to come back to the table to negotiate, and yet that still hasn't happened. Learning loss. Somebody asked about root causes of learning loss. Let me give you my opinion from the elementary viewpoint. I don't blame COVID, I blame the district. Because during COVID, students were not required to be online for instruction. So how are they going to do the work if they weren't getting instruction? Students were not required to turn in assignments. Let's give them some grace. I had students that turned in zero assignments all year and yet moved on to the next grade. So if you want to talk about the PSAT scores, don't blame COVID, blame the district. Because things were not required, students were not held accountable during COVID, where other districts mandated the students attend instruction. Lastly, save our schools, all our schools.
Thank you.
Good evening, superintendent and board trustees. My name is Shannon Cano, and I am the proud parent of two students who attend Wallace Elementary School and are part of the Applied Skills Program. For public record, the Applied Skills Program is a special education student who are on the autism spectrum, are blind, have low vision, are hearing impaired, have Down Syndrome, are wheelchair-bound to specific disabilities, or have medical needs like being fed through a G-tube. A lot of these students require assistance with basic functions such as bathroom, eating, and communicating, things that you and I take for granted every single day. Wallace is only one of four elementary schools in Hammond who serve our population of students. Have you met these children? These are the faces of these children. Do you know who they are? Have you seen these children you'd be displacing if you move forward with your plan to close Wallace? When you make your final decision, I hope that you'll picture these students' faces and remember that disrupting where they are most successful will cause them to possibly regress and suffer. I would also like to encourage you to take a step in one of the Applied Skills classrooms to see how hard the women, and this is one of them, by the way, work in these classrooms. I've done it. I've done my time in these classrooms. They love our children as much as we do and support them like they are our own children. These are people that we entrust our children with because our children cannot tell us. What we're guaranteeing, that these students will be in their school family if you close the doors on them. How will you be able to ensure that our population of students will be given the same love and education that they are receiving now? How will you ensure that the level of safety that these peers and teachers provide to my children and all the children in this program? The Applied Skills classes are full across the district. If you close our doors, not only is there a chance our students will be split up from each other, but there is a chance that they will lose the adults who have helped support them and their specific needs since kindergarten. We all understand this is about a bottom line for the Board and the school board, but it is time for you to look elsewhere. Our special needs students need to remain where they are with their families. Put yourself in the shoes of the mothers and fathers of these neurodivergent children and fight for what is right. Keep our children where they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next community member, Preston Ruby.
Good evening. Technically, I'm not from the community. I'm actually from Gary, Indiana, with the Gary, Indiana Republican Party. Reason why I actually came all the way out here is the reason why everybody was standing outside of the building today with signs. And I am getting ready to watch something happen in this city that we've already seen happen in Gary, Indiana. We've seen it happen in South Bend. We've seen it happen in Indianapolis. It's another city that is getting ready to shut down its charter schools and in its place, or shut down its community schools in its place, we all know already. It's gonna be replaced by charter schools. That's the plan. That's what's going to happen. It's what's happened in every other city. The numbers are manipulated in advance to support that. I don't believe for a second those stats are exactly the truth. I doubt it's that bad. But again, I've seen this happen in so many other cities. If that's not enough reason right there to not shut down the schools, look at it from a fiscal standpoint. If you shut down a school, again, you get the same thing that's happened in all these other cities. It's not gonna get taken care of. The Board has no idea how to go about taking care of it, because this is stuff without precedent. Okay? So it's not gonna be managed, and it's gonna be dilapidated. Then, when it comes time to reopen the school, you're not gonna be able to open it, you're not gonna be able to use it, which again, enables a charter school to pop in and take its place. These charter schools have their own unique way of manipulating data as they are paid directly upon how many of their students pass, which is why they're famous for having students that don't know how to read and write. If that's not enough reason, with inflation in this country the way it is right now, we have an influx of students flooding Northwest Indiana, and the number's gonna continue to grow over the next couple of years, that are gonna need schools in Hammond, Gary, Marriville, Chesterton, and everywhere else that they're going. You'll shut down the school now, you'll need it two years from now, you won't have it. Nor will you have the funds to resecure the building and bring it back up to date after it sits. Another thing to take into consideration is the possible, if not imminent, shutdown of the Federal Department of Education. Okay? So, right now, a lot of these charter schools are coming to fruition, and a lot of these school shutdowns are coming to fruition from things that they've put into place. If they're shut down, the state of Indiana has two choices. A, try to fix this mess, or B, go back to what they were originally doing, which means every student goes to a community school. And again, how are you gonna house them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, looks like Dr. Michaela, last name S.P.A.N.G. Berg. Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Dr. Michaela Spannberg. I am the facilitator of the Gary Education Coalition, and I am here tonight in gratitude to this community and in awe of this community. You have a beautiful community that you serve, and it is a shame, the kind of disservice that is occurring to them. These children are our future. They're the most precious. Educating them is the most precious job you can be given, and I see the dedication of these teachers that have come out tonight, and I see the dedication of the teachers that have been coming out, the parents that have been coming out. What I'm not seeing is the leadership that is going to sustain public schools in this city, and it's because we're incentivizing failure. We're making political decisions instead of what's right for our kids. Which again, tied right back to charter schools. Tied right back to the fact that there's a charter school down the road from a school you want to close, and the school that you want to close just happens to serve the grades that aren't served by that charter school yet. That kind of thing erodes the trust of the community. On top of this, we've seen in Gary how this plays out, and I am happy, and many other Gary community members are happy to be resources to this community in terms of information, in terms of support, in terms of help. And anyone can reach out at gareyeducationcoalition@gmail.com to connect with us, to get that support, to get whatever information they need to move forward and to take action on this. Because without immediate change, these kids are not gonna make it. You're putting kids out into the world who cannot read, who do not understand basic math. That is a disservice. And we've seen accountability. People think that it's not gonna come. It's gonna come. We had issues in my city with a mayor who went downstate and decided to sell out the schools, decided to sell out the community members, openly admitted to doing this after the state legislators called him out on it. We don't have that mayor anymore. Election time is coming, and this is the thing. If all you can think about in this moment of self-interest, then at least make a smart decision. Don't continue to shield people who are hurting these children, because whether or not you hold them responsible, you will be held responsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Elizabeth Coffin.
Hello. First off, hats off to the council. You've come a long way since I came to Clark in 1989 and retired from Hammond High in 2011. I am responding to the presentation by Kelly and comments by teachers concerning substitutes. Personally, I think Hammond should take back the subs under your umbrella, like we had with subservice. I have been on both sides of the fence. I was subbing a high school for a year as a way to get my foot in the door for a permanent position. I've also taught English in junior, middle, and high schools. Now, my experience as a substitute. In my year as a substitute, I was in all the academic classes, as well as shop, PE, and the technical classes. I usually, one, I usually did not know the name of the students. Consequently, students would play the sub. Frequently, I did not have lesson plans that would last the whole period. However, I also know that subs often did not follow those plans. Discipline in the classroom for the sub depended on how well the teacher's discipline was. Seldom did an administrator come by to see how I was doing, nor did the department chair check in on me. I always had my own plans in case I needed them. Students knew if the teacher did not leave plans to cover the period, they would be doing an English assignment. Now, as my experience as a teacher, I was responsible for leaving those lesson plans. I found that preparing for the sub is a hard job. Often, it was easier to go in school sick rather than prepare classwork for the sub. A teacher cannot always leave work he or himself would use. A teacher has to think like a sub. One, I left plans for the sub that I thought would cover the class period. However, each day in my class, I knew I had additional plans up my sleeve that I could pull out if we finished early. Because of my sub experience, I was more aware that I needed to leave more work than what I thought was needed. A sub may not have that skill. Two, since I didn't know the students' names, I called them by the color of their shirts or some identifier, Mr. Blue and White Stripes, Ms. Green Scarf. Teachers need to leave a seating chart with pictures of the students, also have name cards on the desk of students' pictures. As a teacher, I never turned my back to the students. I walked the room. I never sat down. I knew that if I sat down, I would lose the class. Subs need to do the same. Now, for you administrators, know what substitutes are in the building and where they are. Introduce yourself to them. Walk by their rooms. Let them know you support them. What can you have in your sub pantry to help a sub? If a sub knows he or she is supported, that person will request-
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I'd be willing to help. You substitutes-
Thank you. Good night.
Next community member, Ashley Jones.
Hello. Let's go back to the beginning. Okay. My name is Ashley Jones, and I attended the last meeting where I told you about my daughter getting bullied on a daily basis at school. I let you know that I filed bullying paperwork online and also let you know that I have left over 20 voicemails without a return phone call. Since last meeting, I made it a point to continue to call every single morning, but yet I'm still waiting on a call back. At the last meeting, I asked you if my daughter needed to be physically hurt in order for something to be done. Well, today at exactly 3:00 PM, I got a phone call from the school saying that I needed to come there because a physical altercation had happened. So now what? The principal sat down with me today, said they have tried everything in their power to get this other student out, but it's above their head. I knew something serious was going to happen, and I guarantee you, today's altercation is not the end. I'm here to let you know if this gets any more serious than it did today, I will not be this calm. Imagine if this was your child, how you would feel sending your kid off every single morning not knowing if they are safe. So once again, I'm going to give you my phone number, and yes, I know we're live and everybody is listening. My number is 219-588-3902. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Gal Reese.
Last week, I attended an IEP meeting for one of my students. The parent and I were listening to all of the accommodations that their student was going to begin receiving, and at the end, the parent asked if she had any questions. She turned to me and she said, "Yes, I do. How can you promise me all of this when I know they might close Kenwood?". I assured this parent that an IEP is a legal and binding document that will follow her child wherever they end up, no matter what happens. At that, she started crying, and she said, "I know they've closed five schools in the last five years. I don't want my child getting shuffled around. Kenwood is the first school that feels like home to my kids. I don't want my child to go to some overcrowded school where the teachers are so stressed out that they don't have time to give my child the attention that you give. I want my kids to stay put." I tell you this because with the threat of more schools closing, Kenwood being one of them, the welcome feeling that our community schools offer is about to disappear in Hammond. Many of our students walk because their parents work. If you close Kenwood, along with canceling bus services, our students will have to walk a minimum of a mile and a half to school, down busy Holman Avenue with a new set of railroad tracks, to get to an even busier 165th Street, then close an equally busy Calumet Avenue intersection, to then go to an overcrowded Burns Hicks that is already bursting at the seams. All of this to let our building sit empty while you're either required to keep it functional or sell it for $1 to a charter school. I'm asking the Board to please take all of this into consideration. With Highland's open enrollment and school vouchers being made available to students, we will lose more students than ever before in this community. Please, in regards to the test scores that we just had to watch, our new high school is beautiful. I agree. But I think our students were better off before we started closing all of our community schools.
Thank you.
Next community member, Roella Blackman.
Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes, we can hear you.
I'm gonna talk about inclusion, and now it really ties in with what I learned tonight about the PSAT. And I think, of course, we are all born. God gave us what He wanted to give us genetically, parental. So we use that during the years, whatever we have. That's what we have to deal with. When I was going to school, we were tracked. You were either A student, B student, a C or under. If you, whatever track or lane you were in, that's the class you were in. If you improved, then you would go to the higher class. And I said to say this, I think our scores are so low in Hammond, because when they included or started inclusion 20 years ago, they put students in classes they can't handle. Why would you be in a class with a smart person and you have a disability, or you don't have the grade power they have? It's just ridiculous. And I think that's why those grades are so low. I work at Annie Burns Hicks, and they have students included in classes with the average or above, and they cannot handle it. They either have a disability, they are dysfunctional, or they are hyper, they can't stand still. The teacher is constantly telling them, "Shut up. Sit down." It's not fair to the educator. It's not fair to the child, because they don't understand. But we understand. And the teacher cannot teach. If he has 21 kids, or she has 21 kids, seven or eight of them have problems. And so, then when they keep on pushing them on, they don't track them. They go into high school, say, what, by the time they're 8th grade. They know what they can do and what they can't do. So they fall behind. I just think, and of course- I just think, and of course, I'm not going to live to see it, but I just hope they go back to tracking and you accept who you are, you stay in your own lane, and if your parents do their job, I think that's one way we can help solve it. But until they keep on with inclusion, it's going to be a mess.
Thank you.
Next community member, Isaac Mendozza.
Good evening. Me and a couple of the other HAPA students came here originally to talk about how we think HAPA has been ran the last couple of months and stuff, but after hearing everyone else talk, I wanted to talk about, or just talk about, like, I know most of these teachers from when I was in elementary, and I know these counselors and everything that they do for our schools, but they can only be, they can only do as much as they are able to do with how much you guys do. And it's, they're trying so much, even though the next day they could just be fired like that. And I just think that it's unfair to a lot of these teachers, and hearing about all these schools that are going to get shut down, like, I live right next to Edison, and a lot of those kids, they do walk home, and they do walk to their houses that are just right down the street, and to just see them, if that school shuts down, all those kids having to go to a farther school and like walk, because a lot of parents, they can't get their kids at that time because of when they get out. And it just, it just hurts to see all these teachers and all these counselors and everyone that's just trying to do their best when they're under such high-pressure situations with all the students and the contracts and everything, because I may not know everything that's going on with them, but I know enough to see that how they're being treated is really unfair, and that's all I really wanted to say. Just, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next community member, Vanessa Vanes.
This past fall, I had my formal evaluation, and I was evaluated as highly effective. However, your performance as this district's leader is unsatisfactory. In fact, it's substandard, and you don't deserve the salary that you are receiving. You don't also deserve to have your PhD paid for by the district. No one paid for my master's. No one paid for my reading endorsement. I paid for it. It infuriates me that the Hammond community and the teachers' union continue to be the scapegoat by our superintendent for the referendum not passing. We're not the reason. You are. Money was misspent. Money is still unaccounted for. Raises were given to a plethora of people in this room, and unnecessary positions were created in this district. Because of your bad decision-making and your bad decisions that you continue to make, the children are suffering. They're going to suffer. They are. The parents, the teachers, this community, this is not our fault. This is your fault.
Next community member, Marcia.
Good evening. I am Marcia Shenick. I teach 4th grade at Edison Elementary School. I am the elementary trustee for the Hammond Teachers Federation. This is my 40th year of teaching in Hammond. That's always good for a collective gasp, yeah. I would respectfully ask the following changes be made to the suggested 2024-25 school calendar. One, teacher workdays at the start of the year should be August 8th and 9th. Two, students' year should begin Monday, August 12th. Three, November 4th should be the asynchronous e-learning day with parent-teacher conferences. Number four, November 5th should be no school. It's the election day. Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, should be the asynchronous e-learning day with parent-teacher conferences. March 14th, 2025, should be asynchronous e-learning day with a teacher workday. Teachers wanted, the administration agreed last year, to a teacher workday at the end of every grading period. Teachers couldn't possibly be ready for conferences discussing the third grading period the day after the grading period ends. We won't even be able to print report cards the day after the grading period ends because the system will still be locked. Number seven, April 25th, 2025, there should be no school. Again, teachers asked for, and the administration agreed in the past, to the Monday after Easter as a day of no school. These changes would not affect the last day of school for students nor teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Stephanie Vargas.
My name is Stephanie Vargas, proud SCH product, third-generation Hammond homeowner, parent of two boys in the fabulous DLI program at Irving, PE teacher at Franklin Elementary, and member of the HTF. I wanted to again talk about the possible closing of Franklin Elementary. I've talked about it many times, so I won't waste everyone's time, and I'll just go over the key points. There is no SCH school that our students can walk to in under an hour and a half. There will be no bus service. This is the last remaining SCH school in the Robert Stell community. Closing schools, as proven by our $10 million deficit, does not save money. Our children, whether from Franklin, Wallace, or Kenwood, will go to other public schools outside of Hammond, private schools using a voucher, or they will be homeschooled. I'd like to again also address the calendar. Last month, I brought up the safety of staff during Election Day and was told to just close off certain areas. We tried that at Franklin, and in spite of having four doors that directly exit to the outside from the gym, we were told it was a fire hazard. On top of safety, most schools on a regular school day do not have adequate parking for staff. Now, add poll workers, parents, and voters. It is a logistical nightmare. In addition, when SCH asks for a referendum, it's okay to give teachers and staff the day off so they can work the polls, but on every other election day, it is not. Lastly, the relationship between upper administration and the rest of the staff. Why won't you meet with the HTF bargaining team? You were sure to meet the deadline for the administrator contract of January 31st so they know their future, but here the rest of the staff sits two months into the year, and we don't even know what our present situation looks like. School closures are voted on behind closed doors, and there is no transparency with the public or staff, and you can look at our last contract offer and see what is the thought of the value of teachers and SCH. Do what is right and stop leaving the students, staff, parents, and community members in limbo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Catherine Garza.
Good evening. I'm going to start with a shameless promotion of HAPA. My students created the artwork that's behind you. And with the proposed contract, it is set to get rid of HAPA stipends for after-school. And it's, we've already had, it's kind of incited some fear that it's like the walls are caving in on the HAPA program. And I think that that is probably a large reason why we've had some resignations of HAPA staff. And it's really sad to me because not only am I a teacher in the district, but I do have a very precocious and creative nephew who I'm, you know, I'm excited, he's going to probably be coming through Scott pretty soon in a couple of years. And the teacher that left, the theater teacher that left, she was just amazing, and she had a great rapport with the students, and I was just like, that's what he needed. That's, it was just going to be such a huge support to him. And all this is to say, we can't throw the baby out with the backwater. We can't throw the babies out with the backwater. The way this contract, this contract is designed to lose teachers and students alike, students like Isaac that just spoke. And that's it. I'm sorry. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next community member, Linda Anguiano.
Good evening. I'm not currently a teacher, but when I just turned 18 and graduated from Morton High School, I was a freshman in elementary education at Purdue Cal, as it was called then, and I was hired out of hundreds of people, there were only like 30 of us hired, to teach at Lou Wallace. It was a federal pilot program. So I worked with 3rd graders. I taught a math with this new contraption called a computer. Yeah, well, that was, what, 54 years ago or whatever? Can't do my math. I went to Morton. Anyway, I'm joking. I went to Bishop Knoll for two years. Yeah, so I got good education there. At any rate, I felt very privileged to have had a private education, but it was because my parents were such staunch Catholics. So, you know, some people think that was a real mixed bag going to a Catholic school. But I chose to go to Catholic high school. And so I got this job, and I was very excited to go to Lou Wallace, and at that time, it had no walls. It was a school without walls. And right next to the math room where we were teaching these kids, and I had five kids every hour, and was this special ed is what they called it, and these kids would climb up the top of these bookcases that were like 10 feet tall and climb over, and I'm like, "Oh, my God, they're going to follow my kids," you know? So it was a very challenging situation. But the most challenging thing was the kids in that neighborhood. I came from Hessville. I went to, you know, good schools my parents sacrificed, and I was just blown away by the kids in this neighborhood and what they had to go through. This one pair, these twins, they always came to school in torn, dirty clothes. They never had a lunch bag or anything. So I told my mom, you know, "Charlie and Andy are, you know, not wearing those clothes. Can we take them? Can I take them?" "Yeah." "Okay." So the first day, they looked good. The second day, the buttons were broken. The third day, it was dirty. They were cussing and swearing. You never knew they had new clothes. Another child, he didn't have any lunch because his mother would make him sit on the porch until all her boyfriends had left, okay? She had all these boyfriends come every night. So I realized, wait, the kids in this neighborhood really have a handicap. They're mostly African-American and Latino, like me. But I had such a different opportunity, and I don't see that that neighborhood, Lou Wallace, has changed much in these 50-some years. And I think that you need to really look at the neighborhood that these schools are in that you want to close.
Thank you.
Next community member, Autumn Kinsey. Next community member, Addison Kinsey. Okay. Next community member, trustee Blake King.
School city in Harold. Well, perhaps it started when we didn't heed the advice of DOEWAB in 2019 when they told us to cut spending. And then, on the other hand, that was four years ago. DOEWAB titles are fiscal indicator analysis. They're supposed to do the oversight for districts that are seemingly in any kind of financial stress. So my question to DOEWAB, if you're listening, where was the oversight? Where was the warning? From talking to my colleagues in Gary, there were warnings. There was a ton of oversight. So here we are today, in the ninth hour, an agency that is demanding that we balance a budget on a dime. Something that has occurred over periods of years, this board and this administration is expected to fix it just like that. Where is the accountability? Well, it starts with the board and the administration as well, but nobody is held accountable. The only people held accountable are our teachers, our support staff, our parents, our students. Are we going to balance this budget on the backs of these children? Seemingly, we are. State Board of Accounts were audited. Where is their accountability? I met with them on Tuesday and had a Zoom meeting. I was insulted when I asked the question of her, "Why didn't you pull our coattail on this overspending?" She simply said like a Polly Parrot, "Oh, we're a reporting agency. Oh, we're a reporting agency." So I said, "Reporting what?" So I knew I was getting nowhere with the State Board of Accounts, so we have two agencies, DOEWAB, State Board of Accounts, supposed to be overseers, oversight. But the buck stops in this district because we were forewarned not to spend, to cut spending. And if we take a close look at that financial report that Mr. Kurtz provided for us several weeks ago, he indicated where the deficit started. So at that point, why did we continue to spend? Who's going to be held accountable for that? As a board member, I should be held accountable. As a superintendent, he should be held accountable. But everybody is getting away except our children, our parents, and this community. Community, wake up! Call DOEWAB! Call State Board of Accounts!
Your time is up.
And make them and hold them accountable! And make this board hold them accountable!
Your time is up.
And make superintendent hold them accountable!
Next community member, Will Miller. Next community member, Louis Gekas. Mr. Gekas, do you mind waiting until she gets back to her seat, please?
Oh, really? I shouldn't be down there by rights. You're going to relegate me to a pulpit to speak, and I'm an elected official. Dysfunctional from day one.
I agree with you, trustee King. I agree with you. You are an elected official, and you have a right to speak from the dais. Good evening, trustees. Lou Gekas, Hammond Teachers Federation. You can find me at 5930 Holman Avenue. I look forward to hearing from the community. You know, the trustee has taken some of the fire for my speech because primarily, I was going to remind everyone in this room that the conversation about closing schools and whatever else you guys are talking about in secret and aren't sharing and aren't willing to engage in conversations with the interesting groups, you know, that's a problem. And it didn't have to take place. The trustee is right. In 2019, they issued a warning to you. In addition to getting our annual dollar a month, all of a sudden, the universe opens up. Four million. Not enough? What was it? What was the next one? Twenty million. What was the next one? Forty million. You mean, you tell me? You mean to tell me you could not do what other districts have done with that money in similar conditions? You couldn't stabilize this district? Now you want to do it on the backs of students, their parents, the taxpayers, the teachers, the custodians, the support staff? Shame on you. I have not to this moment heard any rumors that any of you are taking a pay cut, at least the top three. In fact, I heard rumors, people say, "We're not taking a cut, we work too hard." Please, I know better. These distractions, three minutes, board policy, what a bunch of BS. You don't want to hear it. Well, I got news for you. You'll hear it, you'll hear it at every meeting, we'll contact you by email, whether you like it or not. Yeah, keep, look at the clock, I'll yield back just for you, Mrs. Miller, 45 seconds.
Thank you.
That concludes everyone written in for public expression.
All right, thanks everyone for being here. Our next regular board meeting is next Tuesday. Good night. Oh, sorry, two Tuesdays, two Tuesdays from now, my apologies, good night.